Okay, it's 6:15, 6:15, so I'll call to order the May 2nd Planning Commission meeting for North St. Paul. Did you want to take the role, Olivia?
All right, Commissioner Elaine Barton.
Here.
Vice Chair Tricia Hamm.
Here.
City Council Liaison Tom Sonic, absent. Chris Bathurst.
Here.
Rick Geldman.
Here.
Commissioner Michael Stallman.
Here.
John Wall.
Here.
And Ellen Worm.
Yes.
Thank you, we have all of us here, so we have a quorum.
Very nice.
Do you remember if Tom mentioned last month that he would not be here? I don't know if he's coming, or just late, or with traffic, or whatever. I can't recall.
I don't remember.
Okay, that's all right.
I know there were a number of accidents.
Oh.
Coming this way.
Oh, okay. All righty, then, first we'll adopt the agenda. Does anybody have anything they want to add to it? I talked to Molly just before the meeting about adding two things under the reports from staff, and that would be talking about the new commissioner packet that we had mentioned last month, and also the Planning Commission update presentation to the council, and where we stand on that. Just to review where we are, since we brought them up last month. But does anybody have anything else? If not, I'll just entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Rick.
Second.
A second by Chris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Then we have the approval of the April 4th minutes. So anybody have any changes or corrections they spotted on those?
Mike, it seemed to me like a lot of the comments were actually yours rather than mine.
Yeah, they were mixed up a little bit. And I don't know if it's a big deal, but you're absolutely right. Because I didn't make those, and you did.
Just wanted to make sure you got credit.
Yes, I got it.
It's all right. It's not a big deal.
A commissioner said.
Yeah, there you go.
Yes?
I was going to say perhaps I could follow up offline, since it's just a matter of correcting names.
Correct. Right.
To get the.
The discussions are correct. It's attributed to who.
Most of it is Mike Stallman correct, or I mean, John Wall correct and Mike Stallman. Vast majority of it, because I was largely silent last meeting.
Okay. Duly noted.
Well, I had one thing on all of the motions, the votes on all of the motions. When it talks about all present voting, I, it's 5-0. We had five commissioners. Tom, the council liaison isn't a voting member, so I just wanted to make sure that that was recorded correctly. Anybody have anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Second by John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay. And we have meeting open. Hi!
Hello, sorry, I'm leaving.
That's okay. We hear there were a lot of accidents.
My accident was two kids that needed to be in four places.
Okay, then we come to meeting open to the public, and we don't have any members of the public here, so we get to just zip right down. Did you just do a timeout?
I did. This would be a great time to make sure that everyone's microphone is on.
I see all the lights.
Awesome. Okay, great. Thank you.
One, two, three.
Good. Thank you.
Sometimes just Al likes to lean back, so his voice isn't picked up.
Okay.
Like John was just doing earlier, we get too comfy. Okay, so we'll move on to the public hearing for variance for 2557 12th Avenue. Molly, you want to go over the report, staff report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is, coming back to you, last month it was an informational item. This is at 2557 12th Avenue East. City property purchased nearly 10 years ago. The city purchased a, what was essentially a blighted property in an attempt to get it improved, and really back into productive use, and on the market for sale. The property was cleaned up, and the property has been prepped since about 2012. The city is currently looking to sell the property to Batsy Housing First Minnesota Foundation, the nonprofit that works with military families to find housing. This property is Zoned Residential 1, so it is suitable for single-family homes, and this neighborhood is predominantly made up of single-family homes. What Batsy proposes to do is work with Lennar Properties to build a single-family home, and rent out the home for a couple of years to military families, so working with them to get back into secure housing as a family. So the proposal here is to approve a few set, variances for setbacks. So the property was platted before zoning was established in North St. Paul. So if you look at the property, and there's an aerial view of the property, as well as a view that shows building footprints, so you can see what types of lots are out there. There's a mix of double lots and single lots, and given that this neighborhood was platted at one time, they're all about 40-foot lots. And this is a corner lot, 2557, so it has, under the current zoning ordinance, a special setback for corner lots. So looking to redevelop a property with new development that is attractive in this market, or essentially almost any development based on the corner lot side setback. And this is where I did find an error in my table that I provided to you. If you look at the table that is in your staff report, that reads standards in the R1 zoning district, the corner lot side setback for a freestanding garage is 20 feet, not 10 feet. So that should read 20 feet. The corner lot side setback for the primary structure, which is the home, is 15 feet. So there's a variance request for the side setbacks, and while this is a legal non-conforming lot, we're still seeking variances from the minimum lot size and from the lot width. So getting back to this property was platted before zoning, with this proposal, there's no change to the lot, so the nonconformity would remain as-is, so it would keep its legal nonconforming status. However, we would like to formalize its lot size and its lot width by seeking a variance. So if you look at what is proposed for the property, and there is a survey that acts as a site plan, you see the existing house to the west, and its location on the property and its setbacks are comparable to that proposed here, which then gives you the idea to look at one of the other maps that was provided to you, the one that really reflects building placement. Then you'll see that the house itself, the buildings, take up about the same amount of land as other buildings in the neighborhood. The proposal is to meet the.
Have a question?
Yes.
Looking at the certificate survey, got 11 feet on the right-hand side, 22 feet for the house, and 6 feet on the other side. I think there's 2 feet left over.
Sorry, didn't catch your question.
Could you repeat that, Al?
I'm just adding up what the widths are. There's 11 feet from Margaret Street. The house is 22 feet, and the left side is 6 feet. That equals 19 feet, or 39 feet, rather. There's 2 feet left over that's not indicated, since the lot is 41 feet in width.
So you're saying that the dimensions that are given are 2 feet less than the lot?
Correct.
If there, if where, everything is captured on this survey, right, with the buildings and the distances.
So really, the, when thinking about this, we're thinking about a building envelope. So there's no request for a front yard variance, so then you can put the front yard at the required setback, and there is a request for the side yard variance for the home and the garage. So then you've got your side building line. There's no back or rear yard setback needed, or interior side yard setback needed. So that really establishes your building envelope, which means that when a building permit is pulled for new construction, the side yard setback would be established by the variance that's been granted, and then they would be meeting all of the other setbacks. So if there is 2 feet lost, they could, and this, I don't know if this is, I think it was more of an omission than anything, it could be recaptured on the other side, but not on the side yard. Does that make sense?
No.
I understand what, what, what he's doing, what Al is doing, is if you look at the survey and you add up across the envelope there, which essentially should be where you can build, that's the lot.
Right.
And you add the 11 for the street, for Margaret's yard, and then you add the building itself, which is 22 feet wide, and then you add the 6-foot setback.
Mm-hmm.
On the other side, the 6-foot yard on the other side, you don't come up with 41.44 feet, which is supposedly the width of the lot. That's all, that's what Al was essentially saying when he said there's a couple feet missing here. And I'm not sure that explanation.
We're not approving the act.
Explained that.
Yeah, but we're not.
That's all. He's just trying to clarify that piece.
But we're not really approving the, the building itself.
No, 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 no. But he's trying to understand.
Yep.
Why do we say the lot is 41 and 1/2, when it appears to be 39?
Right, and so it may be that the variance requested may not need to be as big of a variance as requested if there is an additional 2 feet in here somewhere.
So I did confirm that the setbacks that are needed, but that is, that's a fair question.
Well, it just brings in to question, what are these numbers? If this is supposed to represent 41 feet, then these numbers, 6, 11, and 22.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Maybe the easiest way to say it.
2 and 1/2 feet evaporated.
So it could be that the, that the corner lot side setback, instead of being an 11-foot proposed variance, could be a 13 or 12 and 1/2 foot proposed variance. It just depends. So there are a couple feet missing in here. I'm looking at the, at the house drawings, and I can't.
Actually, get aware.
It's so small, it's hard to.
It's saying 22-0, so it's 22 even, is what it looks like. So, so it looks like the house is indeed 22 feet, and if the side yard is 6, and I know that that's standard, so that, that gives us 28, so that, that would mean that we, there still is 13 and 1/2 feet or something. So it could be that that lot side setback does not need to be as big of a variance as it appears.
Yeah, this is a really good catch on Al's part. I do see that the house and the garage don't line up. It's possible, the way this was drawn. It should be 24 feet instead of 22, but it's, it's hard, it's hard to say.
Well, maybe this will give the people that want to build a house, an extra 2 feet wide.
Yep.
Prove the 11 feet, let them put it on the house to make the garage wider, too. Because 20 feet wide for a garage is, they'd like to have larger than that. Right now, it's 20 feet.
So are you recommending 11 feet for the garage? Or?
The garage says 9.
I'm recommending you keep, you keep the setbacks at 9 feet and 11 feet. Let the people that are building the house add another 2 feet onto the width of the house, which they may want to do.
Oh, wait, it's a consistent 9 setback all the way along, that you don't have to jet out of the garage.
Well, are, is that, does this really depict what they wanted, do they really want to offset the garage like that?
It appears so, I think there's.
I, I mean, I'm not sure.
There's a step stone down into the basement.
Oh, no, but that you could move over toward the side lot line, without a variance, actually.
Yeah.
So.
This first.
That was one of the things. But, you know, maybe we should get through the staff report.
Then we can ask a question.
Just, and, and, you know, we won't, don't have anybody here, so we're probably not, we're not going to have any speakers, and then we could really get into discussion, just in case there's something else you want to cover, Molly, before we do the big discussion.
So we should go through the variance criteria. So the findings for review of a variance are listed starting on page 2. And the findings for a variance require that the variance be in harmony and consistent with the general purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan and this chapter. Staff finds that this criterion is met, as the property would be developed with a use and density consistent with the neighborhood and the comprehensive plan guidance. The lot is a legal nonconforming lot, and the nonconformity would not be increased with approval of this variance. Number 2, the variance will not adversely affect the health, safety, or general welfare of the city. Staff finds this criterion met. In 2011, the city of North St. Paul purchased the blighted property and funded demolition and site restoration. Redevelopment and reuse as a single-family residence consistent with the neighborhood would not adversely affect the health, safety, or general welfare of the city. Finding number 3, the variance is necessary due to special consider, excuse me, special conditions applying to the structures or land in questions that are particular to the property, and do not generally apply to other land or structures in the district or vicinity in which the land is located. Criterion met.
Before you go on?
Yes.
On 3, now that I expect would be impacted by the corner lot, you know, the change that you gave us on the front, in terms of the corner lot setback, freestanding garage. So it went from 10 feet to 20 feet. Does that change your findings?
No, it does not. So the, and I can talk about that in just a minute.
Okay.
Okay. So criterion met, the variance is necessary to redevelop the existing legal nonconforming lot. Many of the developed parcels in the neighborhood are also legal nonconforming lots as to size, frontage, and corner lot side setbacks. The placement of the proposed structures and lot coverage are consistent with other structures, homes and garages in the neighborhood. This is the appropriate zoning relief. So that addressed the question about the corner lot side setback. If you look at placement of structures in the neighborhood on corner lots, most of them would need relief from this same current zoning provision, as is currently, or they are closer. Number 4, the variance requested is the minimum variance necessary to alleviate the practical difficulty. The variance requested, staff finds, is the minimum necessary to redevelop a corner lot that was platted before zoning in North St. Paul. The proposed new development would be placed in a manner complementary to single-family development on other corner lots in the vicinity. So that criterion is met, staff finds. Number 5, practical difficulties are caused from the strict application from the zoning code as outlined below. A, the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the zoning code. Staff finds criterion met. Development of the property in conformance with the side yard setback on a corner lot would only allow an 18-foot wide home, but would still require a variance to the lot size and frontage requirements. The proposed use of the property is reasonable. B, the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the landowner. Staff finds criterion met. The plight of the landowner is unique to the property and not created by the landowner. The property could not be reasonably redeveloped according to the recommended land use, single-family residential, without the variance. The findings for a variance continue on page 3. C, the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. Staff finds criterion met. The variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the vicinity or locality. Building placement is an essential characteristic of a neighborhood. The proposed residence would be placed on the lot similarly to other residences in the neighborhood. D, economic considerations alone do not constitute practical difficulties. Staff finds criterion met. The city of North St. Paul proposes to sell the property to a nonprofit entity for redevelopment of the property according to its intended use, single-family residential. E, the variance is consistent with officially adopted city plans and overlays. Staff finds criterion met. The proposed variance is consistent with the city code, and granting the variance would further the goals established therein. Following the findings for approval of a variance are recommended actions. Each variance, there are four requests, requests, excuse me, are laid out individually.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you.
So now we'll, we'll get the public, open the public hearing. Oh, what time is it? I missed the clock. At 6:39, I'll open the public hearing. There's nobody here, so I'll close the public hearing at 6:39, and then we can have our discussion. But first, we didn't get any input to staff, you know, via the, the website, or phone calls, or anything, right, prior to the meeting?
Very good point, very good question. No.
Okay. Okay. Now, time for discussion.
If we approve this, then we're letting the builder put a house in that lot that's 22 and 1/2 feet wide, instead of 20 feet.
I'm not going to have anywhere to put my snow anymore.
24 feet.
It's, it's really difficult to see, but if you look at the first floor plan, at the very bottom there, it does say 22.
Yeah.
I don't have a magnifying glass, but I can blow it up with my camera.
That's what happened.
And at the top, it says 16 above deck, and that's a little bit peculiar, because the stairway would probably be 4 feet wide, and that gives you 20 again.
Where does it say 6? Where are you looking at?
Okay, I'm looking at.
Which one?
Okay, it's called first floor plan.
The 16, that's just the lot number.
I thought that was.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. Because the driveway says 16, and then the lot number goes 16, 17, 18.
No, this is an actual measurement, because it, it says 16 feet.
Oh, that says 18.
That's 18.
Yeah.
That's 16 and 1/2. 16, 1 and 1/2.
I see 18 there.
I see 18.
Yeah.
Oh, you're looking up here?
If you blow it up with your camera, you can see that it's 16.
Oh, he's looking up here.
See, that does get tricky when you can't quite read them.
The driveway's 16 by 16, and then the garage door's 16.
1 and 1/2 inches.
Well, that's the, that's the garage door.
Yeah, you're right about the 18 above deck. That is 18.
Yeah.
Okay, but then down at the bottom, it says 22.
At the bottom, where?
At the bottom, it's really actually the, the very smallest line, or the very last line.
Yeah, the house is 22.
Above first floor plan.
Well, yeah, the house is 22.
The deck and the stairs is 22, and then the garage is 20.
Right.
Because it's kicked over 2 feet.
I guess, since we're on that particular drawing, I guess that is one of my questions, is why, why not line the, the garage and the house up on the Margaret side? Because there's still room to have, even if you needed a variance, you could do it in the interior si, you know, side lot for the steps.
The stairs have to be at least 28 inches.
Steps have to be 4 feet wide.
I know, but there's, but you can do the variance on that side, is what I'm saying. Instead of the Margaret side, which puts just a piece of it, even close, much closer to the street. I guess that was one of the questions I had. That just seemed kind of logical to me, that, do it where you don't, where it's not quite so visible.
Yeah, but call my, call for the steps to be 4 feet wide.
But that's okay, they are.
There's still room for it.
There's still room.
I know, but then you'd put your garage over in front of the steps.
No, but you can extend it into the, into the.
I'm talking about.
The 6-foot.
Right.
But the deck would be bigger than, wouldn't it?
Exactly.
Because the steps don't count as, as an encroachment.
Right. Steps are not the encroachment. So if you're going to give a variance, I'm just thinking, do it on the interior lot line, which, instead of on the Margaret side.
Yeah.
That was one of the questions I had. Because like you say, the steps, that's not an encroachment, when you've got steps and, I mean, they can encroach a certain amount.
Yeah.
Without a variance.
Yep. Just as eaves and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, right. Stoops and steps, that kind of stuff. So that would, I'm questioning whether that one has to be as large, I mean, or if it needs to be different than the house.
If we're trying to accommodate for steps, then there would be a bump out of the deck, and the deck does become an encroachment at a certain point.
At a certain point, I know, but you can, you can give a variance for that. That's what we're talking about, is variances. The whole, house is an encroachment on the Margaret side. So I'm thinking, if the deck is 18, I mean, 18 plus the 4, it's, it's the 22, so it's going to encroach on one side or the other, apparently, so let's maybe move it so that we can get the garage lined up, or at least get the garage lined up with it, if possible. I mean, it's just something to think about, because it struck me that just having a piece of it, especially the, what we consider a detached garage, with a much larger setback requirement.
But on this deck, it doesn't look, I mean, you'd have to extend it out past the house to get the stairs going down that.
Or move it back.
But that would be the interior lot line.
But it wouldn't be flush with the house.
No, not on that side. No.
Which way do you even do that?
Yeah.
You know?
You could make it a little wider, too.
You could start the step sooner.
Yeah.
That was arbitrarily.
Yeah.
Pointed there. You can move it back.
Or you can move it that way, facing the side.
You can move it south, enough to move it down.
I'm just, it was just something.
It's a design issue, at any rate. It shouldn't really be, at this point, we're talking variance.
Yeah, yeah.
That's up to the architect.
Well, and I'm trying to get at, what variance do we really need? Because when you're talking about this whole. this whole thing, if the garage, if the garage is, where the garage is, is impacted by the deck, then they're tied together a bit. And I do, I mean, the-
But really with the garage, we're, we've got a pretty substantial difference.
I'm not sure why we don't line the garage up with the whole thing up.
Then you wouldn't have that variance.
And you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have the whole, yeah, so much of a variance.
Mm-hmm.
That's a huge variance and I don't see why it couldn't be lined up, to be honest with you.
Through the house, right on the thirteenth side or right on the other side of the alley there, the house is actually kicked out just like they have pictured here.
I know, but I'm talking about this one.
I know, it's just-
And I'm just looking at the whole line and thinking, if, if we line the garage up, you have
Variance.
You don't have as much of a Margaret Street variance, which is the predominant street. There's no question about that.
And I think we need to also discuss the setback on the twelfth avenue. Cause it, first of all, the steps are on the wrong side on the survey part. Because it shows it on the west side, not the east side. And when you look at the, the larger plan, it shows it on the east side. Which I would disagree with, but at any rate, that's another issue. It shows it as three feet on the survey.
Are you referencing the thirteen-foot mark?
From the sidewalk?
No, from the, if you look at this one.
Front property.
And the steps, which is on the west side.
Yes.
What's the dimension there?
Of the steps?
From the lot line.
From the lot line to the steps.
To the steps.
Thirteen feet.
Thirteen feet, okay.
Right. And then the po- the porch and thing is what, seven and a half and five? To get to the interior of the house, is that right?
Yeah, right.
So, um, the front yard does not need a setback.
I know, but what is the front yard?
See, that's what we're trying to figure out.
The front yard is, so they are at, uh, twenty-five feet. They could be at twenty-two. Uh, I was looking at the neighborhood and how the houses are placed. And the ordinance does, um, enable front side, excuse me, front setback averaging.
Right.
Cause I was thinking about, look how the front yards vary quite a bit. And I was thinking, okay, are all of these twenty-five or half of them twenty-five? But yes, so they, uh, at least meet the setback for the front yard.
Well, I've only got like, what, one, two, three on my thing here, so it does make it hard to do an average. It's like blank. Yeah, I know. I mean, do we know what the, what the average is around there? I, you know?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
The average is twenty-two? Okay, and this is what? Just to, just to have it on the record, it's twenty, what do we have, thirteen plus twelve and a half? I mean, is that what we have here?
So I'm really just focused on whether a variance is needed or not.
So am I. That's what I'm trying to figure out. How close is the house to the front lot line?
It is twenty-two or twenty-five. They started with twenty-five and I told them what, uh, the setback requirements are. And-
What do we ca- let me ask it this way. What do we consider the, for the front yard setback when we're looking at this type of design that has an, an enclosed porch? What is the house point, so to speak, where that you would measure to?
So, an enclosed porch is not proposed.
I thought it was. I thought I saw something somewhere. Okay, but if we look at left elevation, left elevation picture?
Mm-hmm.
Because that shows the porch. Well, so does the right. But what, what do we consider the house for measurement per- the dwelling for measurement purposes when we're looking at a setback? Cause I know we've, setbacks for porches, they have to be, they have to meet the setback.
So the, what's, what's shared here is a sample elevation.
Mm-hmm.
This is the lot coverage.
Mm-hmm.
So-
But it kinda reflects that, doesn't it? The design, I would hope.
Well, yeah, but it really doesn't.
Or the entryway, but-
The survey doesn't show that the porch is going further south. It doesn't show it.
Right.
And it's on the wrong side on the survey.
Yeah.
Or maybe it should be the correct side.
So if we, if we look at that, is, if we look at front elevation, let's use front elevation, that might be easier. Is the front door, is the, is the wall that the front door is on what we consider the house? Or is it the, when you get up at the top of the stairs and, you know, you're got the pillars and you're on the porch? You, which is it?
Based on this design, the front elevation is the wall.
Okay.
That's where the, the door is.
So that would be then, so that would be the what, twelve and a half plus thirteen? So that would be twenty-five and a half feet. Am I correct? No?
Because the house bumps out, at least in the plan, uh, to the west of the entry.
We're talking about the-
Take a look at it. It bumps out, must be two or three feet. It's out two or three feet from the entry, from the door.
You know, it's confusing because they're on the, they're on different sides.
They have the same foundation now.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
The edge of the house, according to my calculations, is twenty-five point six feet.
That's what I was thinking. That's what I was just saying.
I'm saying it isn't.
You're saying-
That's to the front door.
Right.
And the front door is recessed by two or three feet by my estimate. I don't, you know, I don't see a number describing it.
The actual front door is back.
Yeah, because to the west of the entry, there's a bump out of two or three feet that goes the full remaining length of the building.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. Oh, gotcha. So it's probably the twenty-two. If we take three feet for that bump out, we're down to about twenty-two?
Probably twenty-two.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So they are at the limit.
Yeah.
For the building itself.
It's just good to have it on the record.
Yeah.
On the record of the discussion.
Okay.
Since these drawings are a little confusing. So. What else?
Well, I'm gonna refer back to number C, variance is granted, will not alter essential character of the locality. I think it would if we are to go with this particular plan. There are no windows on the Margaret side. Not meet the character of the neighborhood. And I should correct myself. There's two basement windows. Which is taller than any of the other basements in the neighborhood.
Oh, is it?
Sure.
Oh, okay.
The basements in the neighborhood are standard basements. They're older homes. This one is almost like a split-level basement. It's like, it goes down from what I'm reading roughly four feet down.
So if I could make a, a comment on architecture, and the variance request, the city has given direction that this, um, height won't work. And so that is becoming part of the, the sale, the, the, um, basement being out of the ground this much. That's what I mean. Uh, so what I see happening is a conditional recommendation. If the, if the planning commission, planning commission chooses to support or make a recommendation of approval, I see a, a conditional recommendation coming and I'm hearing, I like to come up with language as, as the discussion moves along. So I'm definitely hearing, uh, about more windows.
Yes.
For example.
Well, some windows.
So, yeah, I, I had that same thought as well. The only thing I can think about why they didn't is because of the exit ramp from the highway is now basically pointing right at that house, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Do you live right next door, Chris?
Yeah, I'm two or three houses down.
Oh, okay. So the exit ramp, so I mean, the, and for that reason, I'm wondering if that's why that they eliminated the windows. But it does seem to be sort of unsightly to have no windows and just-
It's like they should have mirrored it the other way around with windows.
It isn't like a Feng Shui issue, you know, you're not-
No.
It isn't directly there. It's a little north of it.
Well, it's also, you know, elevated off the ground, although it won't probably be that much. But still, when you get to the second story, having second-story windows, that's virtually a non-issue from a, you know, street level perspective. But I drove by that, you know, purposely coming here and I looked at all the houses that were on the corner lots as I drove on Margaret.
Right.
And many of them have the side, you know, they face the side streets, so their side is to Margaret. And I didn't spot any that didn't have windows facing Margaret. I actually didn't. I thought, oh.
You do, yeah, you occasionally, not occasionally, you frequently see windows that are not adjoining a neighbor. So that people can't see into their bathrooms and their living rooms and that sort of thing. But in this case, it's like they must have reversed it or something because even on the certificate of survey, it shows the, uh, entry on the west side, not on the east side.
Yeah, you keep mentioning that and that's true. They're revert-
It's like it should be mirrored, flipped, you know?
Yeah. It's hard to know exactly what is being planned when you see this doesn't match up with that. Yeah.
In, in support of the, the height issue, um, the thing that struck me is that if their purpose is to provide housing for veteran families, I would think that they would want to be able to accommodate, um, people with disabilities. And, uh, that set of stairs looks pretty challenging in that situation. And so, you know, that I think is something that also fits with the, you know, the less height, uh, on the building.
It also, it concerns me when I look at four bedrooms and four bathrooms and a two-car garage. That's a pretty large house in particular for a small lot. And what are they really looking at? Two or three families coming in at a time or multiple people coming at a time, which would imply more vehicles? I mean, I have a real concern about the design versus who is actually gonna be owning and apparently renting out. So it's like a rental unit.
So the North St. Paul ordinance considers a, um, anything more than three unrelated people living in the same dwelling would no longer be a, a single-family home. And, uh, if there are children involved, then it's no more than two unrelated adults. So, and also, it's, it's clear to me that this, the idea is that they're fitting in a new construction home into an older neighborhood, trying not to dominate the land, which would not be consistent with this older neighborhood. And with new construction homes, you are going to get modern conveniences such as each bedroom has a bathroom. And so accordingly, um, if they were proposing, which they cannot, more than one family to live there, they would need to park them as well. So-
I understand that. It's just that when I look at it, here we're talking about a very small lot. Trying to make do with a small lot, which I'm all for. Four bedrooms, four bathrooms, a double-car garage, it leaves very little space for kids to run around, a deck connecting the two, multiple steps. You know, it just sounds, it doesn't sound right, you know? It, it's, I'm uncomfortable with.
So one thing, um-
And I understand it isn't, uh, a, a variance issue other than the fact that we're trying to make use of property. And it, it almost appears like they're trying to put way too much into this property and it's hard to talk to anyone because the city owns it.
But that kinda gets at the idea of how much of a variance is necessary, or is reasonable. You know, to, to use this land for a single-family dwelling purpose. That's really what you're getting at, is this overly, you know, overdoing it.
But the variances, the variances are the same, it would be the same on the other surrounding properties, right? So it's-
Well, if they built the same thing.
Design aside, whether we like it or not, the variance would go with any-
I totally agree. It just makes me uncomfortable.
Right. But that's the design, you know, which we don't really have a say in anyway, right?
Well, we can give input on the, certainly, the city can give input on the design. They already have.
City owns it.
Well, I don't know if it mentions the total square footage of the house, but I-
Yeah, it does.
It's still a pretty small house. It's just that they're utilizing every square inch of it.
Right.
So you have a, a finished basement where a lot of the new houses, now they don't finish the basement, so they don't count that square footage. You've got roughed-in plumbing for, for additional bathrooms and-
It's nice.
You know, so, but whereas this, they're, they're just, they're finishing everything that they possibly can to make the most out of every square foot.
Getting as much house as possible. It does, actually, it does say on the survey thing what the house is.
Yeah. No, I like the design. I do like the design.
Eight hundred fourteen square feet, which isn't large.
Flipped.
Could it be that the basement is shallow because they need egress out of the windows?
Well, yeah, but they could still have egressable windows without being so, or not so high up.
High up, I don't know.
Yeah.
They could put, uh, welds in.
Right.
I don't know what the code of that is.
Egress?
Four feet or something like that.
So they can, uh, accommodate this with window wells and that's what will be done.
Chris knows. Yeah. Chris?
As long as I can get through the window, we're good.
Yeah. I'm gonna go back to this, you know, the, the one with the lots, even though it doesn't give, it gives the close by properties. But again, I'm, I'm talking about the, the variance for, the additional variance, let's put it that way, for the garage because it sits even closer than the house will. And as I look at Margaret and I look at the structures, I don't see, I mean, there's only unfortunately four, you know, lots right on Margaret there, but none of them have the garage closer to Margaret than the house is. I guess I'm not, I, I'm looking for an explanation on why we don't bring the house in alignment, or the garage in alignment with the Margaret Street house line and do a variance on the interior lot line.
That's what concerns me about all of this, is that basically, I don't think we've got good enough drawings here to make a decision on a variance. If you look at the rear elevation, it does show the garage in alignment with the house.
I know.
And so, you know-
And the front one doesn't show it sticking out.
Right. And what I'm worried about is, is Al's point, which is what is the other two feet? And unless we can make a variance of nine to eleven feet or something like that, um, I just don't see how we can, how we can do this. I don't see how-
Can, can we table this to our next meeting?
That's what I'm thinking.
And come back with all the correct measurements? And the design of the house is flipping upside down?
Yeah.
Not upside down.
No windows on the east or west side, and windows on the Margaret side.
I can sort of see that. I mean, you've got traffic coming up there all the time and at night with headlights.
Yeah.
You know, I can see it.
Yeah, but wait a minute. Look, look where the road is.
Yeah.
It is offset.
There's nothing there.
Right.
You can't-
They kinda come around the curve and, you know-
Well, that's at the lower level when they turn, but that's true of any street.
And that might be true at, at a lower level, but once you get on the second floor again. So, let's talk about the possibility of tabling and getting information that actually is- information that actually is consistent. What, what's the thought on that? Is there a need to act on this tonight?
Well, like I was saying, you could make a conditional recommendation. Um, I'm hearing that a strong preference for the, the home and the garage to line up.
On the Margaret side.
And for additional, uh, windows on the interior side of the house.
Okay, let me ask this a different way.
On the east side.
On the Margaret side.
I'm sorry, I'm still, um, yep, that sounds good.
She's having allergy symptoms. We're going to give you a bye.
That's the thing, though, is that, you know, what is the variance? Because we don't know the exact number of feet.
So, let me ask. Because we had talked about, you know, the fact that we have another meeting scheduled in May. Remember?
Two weeks.
In two weeks. Could something be put together within two weeks that would get at some of the unanswered questions that we have? Such as, get this lot size to, you know, get all of this stuff to fit, so when we add up the, the side yards and the width of the house, we come to forty-one feet, you know, that kind of thing. Plus, can the.
Point four eight.
Can the garage be aligned? And, and the whole idea of some of the design aspects. I mean, that's not a piece of the variance, but it's certainly input we could give to the council.
It does inform.
Yeah.
What, um, what you're looking at.
So, is that a reasonable request from staff's perspective?
I think so.
To table this until our May? Second of nine, sixteenth. I was adding quickly.
Let's see if we'll have a quorum.
I could be here.
I will not.
I have Cub Scout graduation, so I would have to skip that.
Ooh.
And I'm the chair, so I don't know that I can do that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think I.
I'll be here. Okay, Al, the sixteenth, I, okay, we'll have a quorum. And if you have anything you'd like to share that, that you haven't thought of yet or whatever before the sixteenth, get it to Molly and that way that can get incorporated. I mean, because when we're giving this much of a variance, and this is, you know, tricky because we have these kinds of lots, although most of them already have homes on them. So, we just have to think through how much, how do you really put something on these lots? Because they're, they aren't wide.
They're not.
No question about that.
No.
But also, just one thing I noticed and maybe can get clarified is on your staff report, the lot size is fifty-one twenty-seven square feet and on the survey, it is fifty-one eighty-two point five. Which appears to be more, if the forty-one four-four by one-twenty-five is correct, then the, it would be closer to fifty-one eighty-three. So, just so we have, again, consistency in the information we're looking at. That also gives time, you know, quite honestly, to get the, the corner lot side setback for a detached garage to get that ten-feet change to twenty officially in the staff report. If, I'm assuming we'll have a.
Inconsistency on, you know, between the.
The drawings.
Drawings.
Yeah, if the entrance is on the east or west, put, you know, put it there so we know what this really is. The eagle-eye survey and plan people. I really struggle when these things are this small, though. When we've got, you know, four, four levels. I never thought of using my phone to blow it up. What a good idea.
We have a, an application submitted right now that, um, I haven't accepted as complete yet that, um, even using a magnifying glass, I can't see it.
Hard to, hard to accept. Do we need to vote on tabling it, I guess, don't we? Just to see if, if we're in agreement on that?
Sure. Go for it.
Okay, okay. Moved by John, second by Rick. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay, so we've tabled it until our meeting the evening of the sixteenth of May. Pending clarified information. Who knew it would be that tricky? Okay. Oh, now where'd my, I gotta go back and find my, you know, if I could ask one thing, it would be at least for my agenda, I would prefer that, that I not have anything on the back of the agenda page because I keep losing my agenda. That's what guides me through the meeting.
Definitely.
Okay.
One-sided.
I know, it's, no, everything doesn't have to be. It's just the first page.
Just the agenda.
When I'm turning it over, then it gets at the bottom of the pile and.
I, I like having it two-sided.
Okay.
With the exception of.
Yeah. I do, too. It saves paper. Yeah. Okay, thanks, Molly. That was a interesting one. Okay, um, then on to commission business action items and recommendations. I don't think we have any, but I do have a recommendation myself. That's for staff, and that is, I neglected to go and look online and see if I could find the public hearing notice for this meeting after our discussion last month about our public hearing notices, and I just kind of forgot to do it. So, but then I realized we haven't been putting them on the website. We have a, a spot for them on the city website for public notices. But the last time I went there, the last one that was populated was like twenty-seventeen. And I'm wondering if there's a reason we don't put them there. We used to get them in our packet and I liked getting them. It was just kind of a confirmation.
Okay.
That it was done.
So, they are on the website?
They're not.
I'm wondering if they are put in a different place.
I've never been able to find them if they are and they shouldn't be that hard to find.
I agree.
It's, we have a public notice section and it's like that's where they would be. So, did we incorporate the information about who to contact?
Yes.
Oh, perfect.
Yep.
That's really what I was looking for, so.
Sure.
Okay. But maybe you could follow up on putting them on the website. I think that would also be helpful for residents.
Oh, for sure.
Who don't, you know, read the lily. Okay. Reports from staff.
So, with you, Olivia did send an email, um, as requested at the last meeting. You had asked for some informational pieces perhaps regarding acting as a planning commission. And so, it was, we were trying not to guess what each person might need. So, Olivia found what before you is titled Chairperson's Guide. It's a front and back page. It really, what it is, is a format for a meeting. So, I would find this useful if, if I had to step in as a chair or I wanted to make motions or I needed to lead part of the meeting. I would find this very handy to have. Also, there is another front and back page on meeting procedures. These are fairly similar, but it's also a form if you ever wanted to keep a record of who makes a motion, seconds it, how people vote. And also, you did receive by email a link to the Planning Commission, um, Guidebook, I think it's called. And Olivia made a couple, Olivia made a couple of hard copies.
Oh, good.
I don't think you wanted to.
I say, I have a, I have a handful of copies. Um, I can, I guess, make more as requested. I just didn't want to print out one for everyone, given that they're about, I think, sixty or so pages.
Yeah. How, did you say sixty or sixteen?
Sixty. So, this is direct, this is directly from Minnesota APA.
Oh.
So, it's not obviously made tailored specific to North St. Paul, but it is a handbook, everything from what the role of the planning commission is to something similar to the, what goes on at a meeting. So, it's, covers a lot more.
I think the chairman or the chairperson's just got a copy.
And I, like I said, I can make more as requested. I just didn't want to bring.
I don't need a copy.
Full copies, but.
I, I would, you know, ask if Chris or Tricia would be willing to read through or that because you're the newest members and.
Yeah, I got the electronic.
Okay. If you would be able to provide some input on that, because that looks like it might be what we're looking for because it comes from the APA, you know.
And honestly, having looked through it also, I think there's probably something good for everyone. Not just.
Oh, yeah.
New or.
Yeah.
Any interest that you may have.
Right.
Really, it gets pretty helpful.
Who wants a copy to take home?
I'll take one if nobody else wants one.
I would, too. I, I, I downloaded it on my computer, but I just, I like to hold it.
Yeah.
Things like that.
And also, there was a, last thing for me. There was one, another piece that came to you tonight. Mary Mills, uh, this is from Mary Mills. You have a hard copy zoning code or city code that you were given. And what is the thicker packet here are updates to the code covering six months or so. So, the most reliable and your go-to is the online version. However, because you do have a hard copy, we want to make sure that you have.
Got it.
Thank you.
Back to you for just a second, Olivia, but if you could make another copy of that, I can zip into the city and pick it up.
For sure.
As well, because I'd prefer not to print sixty copies.
Absolutely.
I'll be happy to pick it up as well. Our next two, in two weeks, it'll be fine.
I say, I can, if it's okay, I can just bring it in two weeks, does that work?
Sure, that's fine.
And then you don't have to come in.
Yeah, that's fine.
But, yeah, I can make for sure two more copies and then if, if it's ever needed, I can always.
Yeah.
And I'll grab these to you guys.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Thanks, Molly. Oh, by the way, I will mention, I did print out the, one of your linked items, which was the League of Minnesota Cities. You know, um, Planning and Zoning 101, which I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that or not, but that's also a good one just to get a, an overall sense of what the Planning Commission does and what some of the various rules are, so to speak. So, we might end up with a nice little packet that we can dump on the new commissioners. Here's your homework. Okay, reports from commissioners. Tom, you get your turn now.
Yeah. I just don't have a lot to tell you.
Construction going?
I know. So, the construction is going along. I don't have any updates as far as the other things. So, as far as the, uh, the north end of the Anchor Block site, I don't have anything new there. The potential apartment building across the street, I don't have anything new there. The one down on Seventh Avenue, I don't, haven't heard anything new. I, I, not that things aren't probably happening, um, but I just haven't heard anything from the city manager or anyone else as far as how those things are progressing. I know that the, I can't remember, Molly, do you remember what the name of the thing is where they're building the townhomes down on the south Anchor Block site?
Gateway at McKnight?
Yes.
At McKnight, yes. It's got a, it's got a catchy name.
It's a good name.
Gateway at McKnight, so that's moving along. And I think, I can't remember, I, I had heard when they want, they want to get a, you know, a model unit up pretty, pretty quickly so that they can start selling those.
They did a lot of excavation. Oh, question.
Lot of work going on there. So, that's good.
Is there a plan for a road there? Because, I mean, like soon in order to get into those developments?
I haven't heard, I know, I mean, I know there is a plan.
Yeah, right.
You know, it would go, I, I think they had talked about having this road be called, oh, I, I just heard that, I can't remember if it's Castle, but there's, there's a name.
Stallman?
Called the Michael Stallman Memorial Roadway. No, I don't know.
No, there's, there's a, there's a, on the plat, or the drawings that they've done for it, they had assigned a name
and it was only because something had existed in the past, but there's, that name, that name could change. It could, we could call it whatever we wanted.
In all seriousness, I thought it would be the only way they could get to them. Yeah. Through a road there. That's why.
No.
Okay. So, no update on the McKnight?
That road that would cut across McKnight. Yeah, no update on that.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, that's the road. Yeah, so there's no update on that, but there's still, I mean, otherwise it would come back around off of Seventh, right?
Yeah. Yeah, but you couldn't get into the development. Yeah, I mean, yeah, they.
So, that's a road.
It's going to be private roads, right? Wasn't that a private, private roads within the development?
Yes. And we have that downstairs if you'd like to take a look.
No, that's all right. I, I was thinking they needed the access off of McKnight. No, McKnight in order to get into it.
It takes south up and around. I don't know what that street is that's behind. Yeah, that's where they're doing all the work.
Second or something. Okay.
So, so, no, the other one would be nice to have, but they, there's access in the other.
And the pawn shop thing was, now we have a, a text, text amendment zipped on through?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, the text amendment did and they are submitting a conditional use permit as we speak for the actual shop. So, that will be coming before you soon.
What company is that?
Twin Cities Pawn.
Twin Cities.
They have locations currently, um, Oakdale, um, Oakdale, Osseo, Coon Rapids, and the fourth is escaping me.
But there's one in Oakdale, huh?
Yes. There's another, it's Ramsey, City of Ramsey.
So, yeah, so it went through, yeah, it just, that last council meeting seems like ten years ago, so. So, all I have really is just that, you know, the car show is going to be starting again soon, June seventh, Friday, June seventh through Friday, September twentieth. So, um, we're starting to talk about that again and looking for volunteers, of course. And then the only other thing was just the, you know, I've been going to the Boundary Waters now for about, you know, fifteen years. And the, every time I go up there, I'm wondering if I'll run into a bear. And who knew that I had much greater chances right here in North St. Paul.
Yeah, second time.
How many years that a bear has a.
Years maybe, or less.
Where are they coming from?
I don't know. I wondered that.
Seventeenth and McKnight.
Near Apache.
Seventeenth and McKnight.
Yeah.
Wow.
No, I thought it was up.
It was in a pad, near Apache of, twenty-seven hundred Apache, I think, something like that.
And the last one was right down my street.
Was it?
Yeah, it was like three doors out, right in, at St. Peter's. You know, the kids in, in the school were like. Who knew? And all this time in the Boundary Waters, I've never come near one.
Yeah. I know. That was surprising to re, I shouldn't have been surprised because it, you know, didn't happen that long ago either, so.
I, I texted my wife about it. She said, thanks, I'll lock the door.
It was a juvenile, though, right? I mean, do we even know?
It figures juveniles.
Juvenile, delinquent.
In our, we have to have a.
But you do have to wonder where. And then where's the mother?
So, that's all I've got.
Okay. Before we go with the other commissioners, I forgot, I did want, if you could, um, Molly, to kind of give an update on the council presentation that the Planning Commission isn't prepared to do yet.
I'm sorry, what?
The council presentation, the commission, isn't prepared to do yet.
So, I, um, from our last meeting, there, there had been some, uh, discussion on sort of the, the role of the Planning Commission and the relationship between state-enabling statutes and the Planning Commission. And I heard from you, Madam Chair, just the other day about perhaps some zoning updates. And also, as part of the comprehensive plan, once the comprehensive plan is adopted, any zoning changes that are necessitated by the comprehensive plan have to be adopted within nine months of the comprehensive plan. So, I'm foreseeing, yes, a number of, of zoning.
Well, when it comes to the council presentation, I, we talked last month and, you know, I mentioned my own opinion that, you know, for that presentation, it makes more sense to me to focus on the planning aspect of what we do rather than the hearings and all the various recommendations, you know, specific recommendations, but more the planning activity that we want to engage in or potentially need to engage in, in the, you know, coming year, the next period of time. So, that was the conversation that I was, email conversation I was having with Molly to try to, what could we put to? to try to, what could we put together that would reflect that and have some meat to it for the council? Because I don't, you know, we, I don't know that there's any pressing need to hurry up and do this because the council knows what we do. But I would like to be in a position to share it at a time when we really are going to have to dig in and start looking at some text. And a couple of things have come up in the interim. I mentioned the whole issue of the lot width that's come up as a potential thing. We want to at least review and come to some conclusions about, yeah, you change it or no, you don't, as well as the side yard setbacks for corner lots. I mean, there are things that have come up that probably would be beneficial for us to provide some input on.
I, I agree and I, I, I agree with the direction you're going, Elaine. And I just wonder if this manual may give us some help in what, how we may want to shape something up here. I think this is the question that we want to answer for the council or for, for anybody else. So that from the planning aspect, we put all these specifics into our code and land use and things like that. And are these things just suggestions or are these specific rules to be followed? And if they are specific rules to be followed, why are they as they are? Why did, why is a lot forty feet wide here and sixty feet wide there? Why, how did we come to these decisions and what does this mean? What was the planning that went behind these things? Because then I think when we come to looking at these variance requests, we're saying there was a reason why we as a city decided to have lot widths at this size initially. And they're not suggestions. We want to, we want it to remain that way and setbacks are this way for thus reason. So I think that's kind of the, the core of the, of the discussion that we want to get into.
That's kind of what we got at, I think, last month. But I also, from, at least from my perspective, is I think sometimes we tend to forget, I think council definitely tends to forget that we also have a planning function. We don't just have a review function, we also have a planning function and we don't spend a lot of time on that. So I'm thinking myself, it's time to really start thinking about what do we need to be planning for? We toss out various things. I mean, you've mentioned, what, tiny houses or whatever they're called, several, at several meetings.
Yes.
I just read something in the paper about mobile homes being the most affordable housing recently when they were talking about so many being closed and stuff. And I thought, there's all kinds of changes going on. And, you know, at some point, we can add some value and we don't get involved probably as often as we should. And I think that staff forgets. That's part of our role as well, is planning.
To that point, Elaine, not, not just that the planning commission is involved in planning, seems odd. But not only that the planning commission is involved in planning, but that the city has made plans.
Yes.
And that the city has decided over the years that, that we want to do certain things as we move forward. The comprehensive plan is the perfect example of how we want to shape the city as we continue to move forward over the next ten years. And there are several other plans that we have created. There's the management plans, there's the living streets plan, there's the, you know, all these different plans. And they were, there was a lot of time and effort that were put into these plans and they all had purpose. Because then what happens, and I know you get frustrated and a lot of other people get frustrated when this happens, is that sometimes a singular issue then is presented to the council and they're seeing that thing in isolation.
Right.
That's right.
Not as part of a bigger plan.
Right. Right.
And so I, I think that's something that's important to discuss.
You put it very well because, you know, we've run into that before and I think it is because we don't talk planning. The council probably doesn't really talk big picture planning. They're also more task and specific driven and that's where that interplay isn't quite working the way it probably could. So anyway, it's a whole lot to think about. So I'm thinking we don't have to, you know, rush into it, but let's put something together that actually moves things along.
And so, correct me if I'm wrong, but what we're talking about here, this was something to be presented to the council at a workshop, right?
No, this is the thing that's done at the council meeting, but it certainly could be at a workshop.
I thought we were going to do, so that, at the council meeting, I thought that was just an update.
That's usually the, here's what we did in the, in the previous year and here's what we're going to do this year. And for us, it's the same thing every year. It's like, here, here's last year's, change the date.
Everybody knows.
Yeah, everybody knows.
Because we don't, these things, what happens here doesn't happen in isolation, they all move forward to the council.
Right.
The council is very much aware of what the planning commission has done.
But I think a workshop is actually not a bad idea for a presentation.
That's why I'm thinking we may have more flexibility with time. We could maybe get into things a little bit more and have a little bit more discussion around it.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, we'll definitely want to vet some topics.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
I just didn't want that one to drop because I don't even know why it came up again because usually this is done in January and this is April it came up and I thought, well, nobody missed it, really. So anyway.
Well, is it a state requirement?
No.
So, there you are.
We didn't do it for years and then all of a sudden it, we were doing it. Anyway, that's okay. Then reports from commissioners. Tricia, you're already
I'll be gone on the sixteenth, that's
Oh, that's right, you did mention that. And you're gonna as well? Okay. Rick?
The Silver Lake Park cleanup. Oh, yes, thank you. Silver Lake Park cleanup is this Saturday, it was postponed one week. That's also the city cleanup date. So if people are interested in coming out and helping clean up the parks, we'd appreciate people participating.
What time?
Nine till twelve. And then I understand there's also some type of a group meal at noon. Where is that, at, at Norv? I don't, I don't know where the
Oh.
the meal is.
I don't know either.
I'm not sure.
Okay, we'll have, we'll have donuts.
Oh, you will at Silver Lake Park, you'll have donut, that's the meal?
Yes. Something healthy.
Well, you need those calories because you're going to be cleaning.
You bet.
Okay, thanks, John.
I was just wondering, do we have any actual agenda items for May sixteenth? Is there something planned?
Just this item. Just the tabled item.
Oh, it is, okay. All right. Yeah, that was it.
Okay.
Just curious.
No, I just want to piggyback on the June seventh, is that right?
Car show.
Car show. That I noticed the city halls have an open house again. Or the firemen.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we're doing something a little different other than the burn trailer this year. But other than that, that's all I know.
Oh, you don't know what you're doing?
No, it's, it's undecided. The interim chief and the assistant chief are working on something.
Remember last year you had kids were holding the hose and, oh, that was, my grandkids loved it.
Yeah, Silver Lake Splash, we were doing that as well.
Yeah.
With the fire truck. But as far as the June seventh, not too much is planned yet.
But they're always full. I mean, it's unbelievable how many people show up for that, so that's pretty neat.
It's interesting stuff.
It is a lot.
Yeah. Al?
I'm good. I'm over adjourned.
No, no, no.
Oh, wait a minute, I got something, question. Mike, as you brought up, I believe you have brought up, what, you know, what is on the agenda for the sixteenth? If it's only this item.
Yeah, here we go.
Is it, if it doesn't matter to the applicants, would we be able to move it to the July, is it July third?
Or June, you mean, June.
Excuse me, June, I'm jumping ahead.
You're way ahead.
Uh, June, you know, the first meeting in June.
Then we don't have to meet.
That way we don't have to come in twice, we'd be able to do all of it in one. If that's workable, that, that would be my preference.
That's up to the city, really, because it's their request.
It's not in keeping with the plans to develop the property.
Okay, so the
That's fine then.
Two weeks from now is better?
Yes.
Two weeks, okay.
And then the council will be able to act on it
Right away?
At the beginning of June, their first meeting, I guess, huh? I guess.
Well, or the, it'd be the second May meeting possibly, right?
Yes, this is a long month, so.
But there would be still time to get it to the council.
Yes, there would.
Yeah. Okay, in a timely, in enough time to kind of keep things
It could be done at the twenty-first, the May twenty-first council meeting.
Oh, oh, okay. Oh, I'm missing my
Okay.
So we do want it next one?
Yeah, we, no, we want it
On it two weeks from now.
Two weeks. Yeah. Okay, well, I don't have anything else other than now we know our next meeting is scheduled May sixteenth. Same time, same place, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Al already made that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rick, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. We're adjourned at seven thirty-six.